Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is June 10, 2015. If you would, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silence and reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So first off, I'd like to announce that President Daley will not be joining us this evening. He's not at graduation. He had a family emergency that he had to tend to. So he asked me to step in and run the meeting this evening. And I do know for a fact that the other three Commissioners are present and they are at graduation right now. The first thing I'd like to do is I have a special report for Brookside Road Stormwater Management Projects. Over the past several years, the Board of Commissioners have focused efforts on improving stormwater management in the Brookside Road. We can start over again. Come on in, Bob.
Go ahead.
Oh, are they all right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's fine. We, Jim Garrity, said it would be okay if we just did the special reports. So that's what we were doing, that's all.
Oh, no, I was there.
Yeah, I knew you were.
Oh, sorry, yeah, boy.
She's here?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll wait a minute and then we'll let Amy join us and then we will. So the first order of business would be the special report on the Brookside Road Stormwater Management Projects. What we discussed Monday evening is we asked the engineer to develop a list of all of the projects that we know of and where we are on some projects, you know, if some projects are completed, if some are outstanding, if some of them are not going to be pursued. So what this is, is this is a report generated from that list. So as soon as Amy gets in, we'll go over the list. It's only about three-quarters of a page long.
Do you want to do public comment? We haven't done that.
I would like to wait for Amy for public comment. We could do, there's a real short report for website update that we could do. The Board of Commissioners is pleased to announce that the township recently completed a comprehensive website update. In addition to a new look for the website, the update includes a responsive feature for all mobile devices to gain better access to the township website. I think it's, I think it's referred to, hi Amy. No, no, please. We just wanted to get special reports out of the way. I think it's, isn't it referred to as scalable? Is that what it is?
Scalable.
There's a term for it that, it fits on any device you're using. So if you're using a mobile device, it'll scale down to that. If you're using a computer, it scales up to that. So that's the announcement on the website. So just to go over the Brookside Stormwater Management Project Report, over the past several years, the Board of Commissioners has focused efforts on improving stormwater management in the Brookside Road neighborhood. I would like to provide an account of those efforts. One, the township constructed a large swell on the Mount St. Joseph Academy property to direct overland stormwater flows away from the properties on the north side of Brook Road. Two, the stormwater detention basin located by the softball field at Mount St. Joseph's Academy was reconstructed by the township. Three, the township secured cooperation from the St. Joseph's Villa to construct a larger than necessary detention basin for their new parking lot adjacent to their facility. Four, the township encouraged PennDOT to open the mouths of the existing storm sewer inlets along Bethelam Pike. Five, the township constructed, Phase One of the Terminal Avenue Storm Sewer Project was completed by the township. Six, the township studied the feasibility of constructing a stormwater facility at 8911 Montgomery Avenue. However, it was determined that no meaningful benefits would be realized. Seven, the township studied the feasibility of performing stormwater detention at Cisco Park and Hillcrest Pond under multiple scenarios. It was determined that no meaningful benefits would be realized with those efforts. Eight, the township submitted a community development block grant application to Montgomery County to install stormwater sewers along Brookside Road. This application is still pending. Nine, the township conducted two neighborhood meetings to solicit interest from residents located within the floodplain to participate in the federal flood hazard mitigation assistance program. This program provides funding to relocate families from the floodplain. The township committed a 25% local match to those residents interested in the program. The application period is still open for Brookside Road properties, but the township must know of the interest of the residents by the end of June. Ten, the township studied the feasibility of constructing a stormwater detention basin behind Carlisle Road and Montgomery Avenue properties. The benefit cost ratio for the $800,000 project is not favorable. The second and third phases of the Terminal Avenue Stormwater Drainage Project are still pending, but the township is awaiting calculations from the Office of the Township Engineer on potential benefits of proceeding and to demonstrate evidence whether Phase One of the project has achieved the goals of the project. Twelve, sanitary sewer dry weather flow monitoring was completed and three sources of inflow and infiltration within the sanitary system were repaired. Thirteen, the township installed inflow infiltration caps in all private sanitary laterals along the MS3 sanitary sewer line, Erdenheim and Winmore, to prevent inflow through the sanitary sewer vents. And that's the report. There are no communications this evening that I'm aware of, so now the board is open to public comment or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Please.
Good evening. Mike Maxwell, 45, Brookside Road. Brookside Road Stormwater Management Project Report. My question first is, why was it not advertised on the agenda for Monday night's workshop?
Why? Did it came up?
Came up at like last minute?
Yeah.
That day?
On Thursday or Friday, the week before.
So there was no time to put it on the eBlast or send a new one out?
We probably could have done it in eBlast.
Okay. I mean, it's good information that you write out. It's nice to know that there's a list of lists that we can refer to of the projects. The only one that I have is probably from, was put together in 2008, was a graph of the timelines. And I don't know if that was either, has been updated or still in use. So that's the only thing that I can refer back to.
Well, the list will become part of the minutes of this meeting. So it would be available to be referred to at any time.
I believe Jim Daley asked Monday night to have that list updated, the schedule.
The schedule updated?
Yeah, to create the construction management schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one I'm referring to. It just seems weird to me that presentation like this where you have on a constant basis residents asking questions, where are we at? Where do we go? To have no knowledge that this presentation was coming Monday night. I know a lot of the people that I talked that would have loved to have been here and heard the list questioned certain things. I know for one, I like to question the fact that there was improvements to the stormwater on Bethelam Pike by PennDOT.
They opened up.
I think you need to go back and look at that because in no way, shape, or form did that repair that they so-called did had any impact on the flow of those drains of water they capture. The only correct way to fix it is to remove them boxes and put the street inlets in, the bike safe ones.
I think we discussed that.
And we've talked about that since 2008.
PennDOT does not have the funding to do that, is the answer that we received.
Wouldn't that fall under the township and the maintenance contract?
It's PennDOT, it's PennDOT Road.
But doesn't the township sign a maintenance contract on state roads?
No.
Not, no, not for that type of work.
Just for flowering?
It's only for snow emergency work, yeah.
There's nothing else?
For snow removal and salting.
So the township couldn't have taken it upon themselves to fix a drain if it was collapsing or something?
No.
We'd have to wait like 10 years for PennDOT to?
We'd barricade it, make it safe.
Correct.
And have PennDOT come out and repair it.
Thank you.
There is legislation in the works to potentially have the state roads be able to be repaired by the township. But at present, we're precluded from doing so.
So basically handcuffed by PennDOT?
Absolutely.
For their neglect in their storm system on Bethelam Pike?
Absolutely.
Okay. I mean, I just feel that there should have been sufficient notice to at least allow us to come here.
That's why they're making the announcement tonight. We talked about it Monday night and said that'd be a good thing to put forward on Wednesday night.
Still, nobody knows about it tonight. It's on the agenda tonight now. The only reason people know about it is because I found out about it yesterday.
It was on the, it was on the agenda.
Was not on tonight and then the eBlast never went out today.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, I know.
It went out.
When I walked in, I saw it on the agenda. Monday night it wasn't, and there was no eBlast today to tell us what the agenda was. So what I'm saying is, no one on Brookside Road knew this list was available tonight. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I totally understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I can't dispute that. I did not receive the eBlast in the, you know, yet, or I didn't look at it. But, you know, the report is a compilation of everything that's going on over the years. I mean, I thought Commissioner Daley, who requested it, and I don't know if Commissioner Salmon was a part of that, but that was a great thing to put forward. But again, the questions that come every month when Jeannie comes up, you know, this is just a one-stop shop for that, for all those questions. That's, so whether it made it to Monday, I mean, it certainly will be the same list next month. If the people from Brookside Road would like to come in and comment on it or ask questions, we'll be here. I don't know how else to, I can't go back and change what happened Monday. I know it was late in the agenda process that we heard about it. So, you know, we'll just have to move forward from here.
However, Mike, you do know that every month, there's a representative from Brookside Road or two.
There's a reason why there's a representative, and I believe Jeannie can elaborate on it, and it started back in 2008. And it continued with Commissioner Bell that a reason why we should present our faces at the meeting. Because the fear is, once we stop, the problem goes mute and there's no more attention to it. Because we started in '04, it went on deaf ears, we flooded in six and eight. In eight, you open your eyes to what the problem was, and it went bigger than Brookside Road. I mean, this is repetitive things you hear from me all the time. So it's been since 2008 to now, we're still dealing with, okay, Monday night, storm's coming. I couldn't be here. I'm worried about my sewer, my street, neighbors sandbagging their doors. The same thing that keeps going on every time there's a storm. Because we just don't know whether the system's going to work or the sewer's going to back up. But the only thing I'm asking is, it would have been nice to know that there was a list that could have, yeah, maybe some of the questions would have died off eventually to, you know, I'm not understanding that, I'm understanding this. Since 2008, I mean, you guys can tell me whether I'm right or wrong, it's been a good faith relationship between the residents of Brookside Road and the board.
I think it still is.
We've never disputed anything that was done, and we've never told you, no, we don't want this project to happen. It's basically come help us.
That's why we thought this was a positive.
Right.
I understand it's a positive, but what I'm getting feedback on is, once we found out, why weren't we notified to come and hear it? It would have been nice to hear it at the time, is what I'm saying. And even right now, there are six people that joined me here tonight only because I told them today that this was going on. The rest of the street has no idea that there was a summary of the projects throughout the years. That's what I'm saying.
Right.
Okay.
And that there creates anxiety with the residents that, okay, they don't want to tell us something for some reason.
Right.
Or what's next? There's a lot of what ifs, and I can't answer them. You might not be able to answer them. It's 11 years of what ifs.
Right.
And anxiety and.
And improve.
Losses and, you know.
And improvements at the same time. I mean, you know.
And these are things that leading free.
We're all working to the common goal, right? We're working, we're working towards the goal.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is a part of that.
I mean, it took four years for us to get our foot in the door. And then, you know.
Totally disagree.
I understand it's repetitive, but it's, we got to come, sooner or later, we need to get to the point where, you know.
Well, the hazard mitigation program was put out as an effort as well, which we had at Hemlock, which was another area which needed the township's detention, which were other areas that needed a township's detention.
Correct.
Much activity has happened in Brookside Road as well as elsewhere in the township. This is a summation of that.
Mm-hmm. Understand it.
And I truly feel that was the whole intent of this list, was just, there's been so much talk, and I've only been here for a little less than a year, just to try to organize it. And so people could quickly look at a piece of paper and say, oh, yes, okay, we see this is completed, this is completed, still working on this. And I don't think there, I'm sure there was no wrong intent in putting this list together. It was just kind of.
I don't think there was any wrong intent. I just, the feedback I'm getting is, why weren't we, why wasn't on the agenda? And why wasn't someone notified?
I know it was done very quickly. It was just like, last minute, this would be a good idea to try to put together for Monday night's meeting because we weren't sure.
To get the Commissioners up to speed, basically. Have the engineer, get the Commissioners up to speed. We do have two relatively new Commissioners. And this has been going on since 96.
Oh, I know. And I've had all the, I mean, unfortunately, it's the residents of Passau End Street. I have all the stories.
I understand.
And it was all turned over here.
Right.
So now that we have this list, let me ask you this. What's next? Because that question's going to be continued to ask. Do we wait to see if we get one of those rains that, oh my God, here it comes?
No, there's.
In the report, we talked about things that are pending. The pending is the application to Montgomery County for the first phase of the drainage system on Brookside. Second thing is, is there's, the engineer was asked to calculate the benefits of what was done on Terminal in Montgomery. In other words, is it worth doing phases two and three, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and what's the return on that? Is it going to be 50% better, or is it going to be 2% better? So that's what Glenn was talking about.
And then we talked about additional monitoring for the sanitary.
For the sanitary, yeah, the metering.
The metering. So.
Yeah, we can charge them for the coming back into our house because we pay for them coming out.
If, can you meter it?
I don't know.
I'm just being smart.
No.
I apologize.
I know, but.
Thanks. I mean, your comments are duly noted.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Judy McClintock, 17, Brookside. I feel as I felt. As you know, I come to every meeting, but my grandchildren from California, I didn't come. I got the email blast about the planned workshop, and I send it to everybody on the street in case somebody didn't get it. There was nothing on there about Brookside. And I guess I have to direct to our Commissioner. Why don't you email us? Why don't you tell them?
Well, I mean, for tonight, why don't you direct it to me?
Yeah. And quite honestly, the Board of Commissioners as a group didn't get it until Monday night.
Yeah.
I got a call on Friday to create this list. I created the list, they were distributed on Monday night. As a result of what they read, they wanted to get it out to the public. Whether it was created three weeks ago or Friday, fact is, the list has been created now to work from.
And where do we get a copy of it? Does that have to go online to our?
No, we can give you a photocopy of it.
Yeah, because then I could.
The actual list.
Glenn, I don't believe there was any actionable items on the list. It's just a summation.
Well, it'd be nice for me to pass it on.
It's just a summation of what has been done to date.
To the people on Brookside Road.
And what is in the pipeline. What's in the pipeline, but there were no actionable items.
Yeah. Well, this is great because then we have something to look at and see what's been done.
Well, I think that was the idea that Commissioner Daley and Commissioner Salmon had.
Yeah. But it was just, and then we didn't get. We usually get an email that says there's a workshop, and then we get an email to the business meeting. But we didn't get that. So like he said, nobody knows except us that this is.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know why the email for tonight's meeting didn't go out, or.
But as far as the workshop, because every single workshop is on, has stormwater.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's on.
Has stormwater management, and our engineer reports every single month on the status of Brookside Road. You're here, you want to hear, you know that.
I do.
And it wasn't an item that needed action to be on an agenda.
Well, the last time I asked, and we were talking about the, we couldn't get the grant for the dredging of, you know. And that, and that the next thing we were going to wait for is to see if it could be put in the budget, or, so there didn't seem to be anything that was going to happen for a month or two, you know, so.
Well, and really, other than compiling a list of everything, there's really been no other.
Yeah.
I think we did have a discussion on sanitary.
We just would have made sure somebody was here.
And metering, but, yeah.
If we know. All right.
And I think I was just informed by Mike Taylor that we believe the email problem probably stems from the updated website that I discussed, that I reported on earlier, that there might have been a problem with that. And I'm going to review that.
Yeah, I guess, because nobody got it. I don't mean just Brookside Road. Nobody got that.
Glad that didn't go out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joan Schick from 18 Brookside. I was also going to ask for a copy of that report. I tried to write down everything I read, but I'm sure I missed some things. I had a couple of questions. Is it possible, is it an idea that you would entertain to have a stormwater management committee of the board? Because it's such an important issue. There, I know there are committees for other issues.
You're talking about an advisory committee, similar to like emergency management and public works or whatever?
Shattrick, Cisco Park, you know, all those. I mean, it seems like.
Certainly something we can.
We discussed it before, but we have the engineer and we have the experts doing the.
During the day, yeah.
So we don't, it wasn't needed to be a special subcommittee.
It just seemed.
Well, we, here, let's do this. We'll put it, we'll put it on July's workshop agenda to discuss it.
Okay.
Again.
That'd be great.
And we'll get everybody's view on that.
Yeah, because it seems like maybe things would move a little more quickly if there were more cooks in the kitchen handling it, you know. I don't know. You don't agree?
Committees tend to.
Yeah, my experience, it goes the other way.
Things down. Yeah, but when they're focused. I mean, the board has so many issues to look at.
I understand.
The committee would be focused on just that.
Sure. I understand.
The other question I had is, I went on to, after I heard about the topic last night about Brookside, I went on to the website, the township website, to see if there were minutes. Of course, it was too soon. It says there on the, on the website, you can view the video or get the PDF. I was unable to get any PDF. And I'm wondering, are the minutes posted in PDF? Because I really don't want to watch the whole video.
I believe they are.
I was unable to.
I reviewed them.
I looked at the most recent.
No, that wouldn't.
But it shows the month. Whatever the most recent month was, that's the one I clicked on.
Meeting minutes will be posted after adoption at next month's meeting. So in other words, the business meeting minutes for last month won't be posted until tomorrow at the earliest because the board has to prove.
Put the videos up.
Okay, so are the other months posted in PDF?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because every time I opened the PDF, it was empty. So maybe it was.
Our new responsive website.
Okay.
Thank you.
And one other thing I wanted to mention is, a couple of times I asked this question about the water flow being diverted behind the creek on the even side of Brookside Road. I live on the even side of Brookside Road.
Okay.
And my concern is, can it handle it? And I've heard that it should be okay. But that makes me very nervous. When we have a major rainstorm, it gets very high. It doesn't overflow. I'm fortunate, my property is higher than most that go down, that go towards the end of the block, the cul-de-sac. But who knows? I don't, I don't have an understanding of how much more water is going to be going that way and what impact that can have.
Yes, please.
The engineer explained is, is what we're talking about, all the water in the lower part of the watershed. And what the theory is, is to get that water into the creek as quickly as you possibly can and get it out. And then the waters in the upper part of the watershed's come down there. So if you detain the stormwater in the lower part, you're holding it there to wait for the other water to come down and join it. So the thought is, is get it into the creek and get rid of it as quickly as we can.
Okay.
So that's what, that's what they're doing with like the Brookside Road project in the future and the Terminal Avenue project that they've done out last year.
So there's no overflowing the banks issue that you're concerned with?
Depends on the volume of the storm.
Yeah, it depends on the storm.
Right.
But the concept behind it is, makes sense if you're trying to get rid of what is right there quicker, so it gets out of the way. So when the rest of the water comes down, it's gone.
Okay, so that makes me nervous.
What's more duration?
Because you're adding to the problem.
If it rains like it did in 96, and we get 10 inches of rain in one hour, we all have a problem as well. It's the duration of the storm and the volume is a mathematical equation. And at a point in time, all systems will fail. You know, you can't make a fail-safe system, and especially the closer you are to the lowest pour of the stream. As always, they can back up because of storms elsewhere, and then we get a storm, it could, it could cause a negative impact. Things you can't protect.
So in the past, through those, the remnants of those hurricanes that we got, when everybody really had the major problems, my portion of Brookside Road did not receive water from that creek.
Okay.
So are you saying that it's possible that if we have a storm like that again, that that could come over?
I would think it'd have to be greater than whatever that storm was. Whatever that storm was, it'd have to be a larger storm.
So I understand that you're looking for ways to reduce the water from going elsewhere, but to me, in my pedestrian understanding of all this, adding more water to a place that has a little bit of a problem and making that a bigger problem, I'm not sure where that's a fix.
Well, again, as Don says, if you have a short-duration storm, a heavy, short-duration storm, you're taking the early water and getting rid of it quicker.
I heard that.
Because it's not meandering through the streets and going down your road and over curbs, and getting there, the same time water from upstream gets there, which causes a quicker flash flood. If you get rid of the lower half of the water quicker, by the time the upper end gets down to you, it'll, it'll temper the overall issue, unless, of course, it's a long-duration, high-volume storm. And then there's, you know, near nothing you can do.
Okay. But as I said, it wasn't a problem before in the longer-duration storms. So it may be in the future because more water's going that way.
Only if it's a bigger storm.
Okay. I just would like it to be noted that there is concern on Brookside Road about that idea or process, if it's going to happen, when it's going to happen.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks for your time.
You bet. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Board members. Christine Hesser, Orland Avenue in Orland. Just had a quick question about the land development application submitted by Shelton Hand Trans. Is there a timeline? Do you guys have any type of timeline on that? He applied for it? Is it coming up?
I do, but I don't have it with me. But we do have one. Because as Mr. Garrity explained, last month, there's a 90-day window of opportunity. Yeah, we have one. I just don't know what it is.
He submitted it, and then it was returned because it was incomplete or something like that?
That's right.
Would that, would we get notice of that if it, it has to go to the Planning Commission, I assume? So we would get notice of it?
You'll get notice of the first meeting with that, and then after that, we hope that you keep up with the meetings. Yeah. But I can, I can send you a copy of our timeline. I just don't know what it is.
Could I ask for clarification? The initial submittal is given and then returned due to incompleteness? Or?
That was held. It was held because there's, some of their checks were wrong, check numbers were wrong and things like that. So they got that all cleaned up. The day they got it all cleaned up, I think the clock started to.
So it didn't start on the initial?
Didn't start on the initial.
I think that's the question. Might be the question. Didn't start on the initial application and started whatever that date.
When that application was.
And Jim, also, the clock starts, what, within 30?
At the first meeting.
First meeting of the Planning Commission or within 30 days of application, right?
Yeah, it gets really complicated.
I think it's crazy.
But the 90-day starts after the application is complete, on the date of the first meeting of the Planning Commission, after the application is complete, or 30 days, whichever is sooner. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope I can read my reading later, but thank you.
If not, call Don. He'll.
Yeah, I have.
Don hasn't, so, yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Any other public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Margaret Mary Burke of Orland. Board members, there are four items, if you don't mind, I'd like to talk to you about. Initially, I'd like to propose a bicycle pedestrian lane be marked on Walnut Avenue that leads to Sandy Run Park. As you know, now with the season, there are more bicyclists and pedestrians that utilize that road. And for the safety of all concerned, I would make that proposal.
Yeah, I think what we'll do with that is, we'll ask the police to take a look at that and, you know, our traffic control officer to look at that and report back.
Thank you. Thank you. I know that life gets in the way with things sometimes. And commissioners, you're not always able to attend your meetings that you may be a liaison for. And I would appreciate, if possible, if another commissioner could attend those meetings that they are the liaison for that committee, especially when there are key topics that will be discussed. Because I believe that would really help that committee's insight of the commissioners, from the commissioners, so that the commissioner's insight can be given to that committee.
For the most part, it's been my experience that we do try to, we would put an email out saying we're not going to make a particular meeting. Can anyone make it for us? So there is an attempt to fill the chair. Other than that, there's, there's usually a staff member present at those meetings. Whether it be Rob for code enforcement, Chuck for STEMS. I think, who does Shattrick?
Mike.
Mike. I'm sorry, yes, I remember that. But there's usually a staff person at all those meetings also. So I know there's an attempt to have a commissioner have that chair filled. And then there's, there's usually a staff member assigned to that committee with the commissioner. Unless you know of one, I don't.
I'm not certain if a staff member attended the Planning Commission meeting that was recently held. I, I know Mr. Sanders, he was taken ill.
Well, I can, sort of, I can just tell you, because I was actually, you know, indisposed or predisposed, whatever.
Predisposed.
Whatever it was. You know, you're specifically talking about the zoning, limited industrial zoning thing. That had been in front of us twice. Okay, this was coming back a third time for just a kind of a, kind of a once-over. And I, and I corresponded with Rob, and I said, you know, I can't be there, but do you see there's an issue? And he basically said no, because I had already pretty, I think, pretty decisively told the board what I thought we wanted, which was an answer to our questions, not just for them to make up, you know, their own agenda and answer their own question. And I was pretty clear about that, and you were there when I said that, okay? And that carried forward into the next one, and I, I corresponded with Rob, and he said, that's fine. So that was why that worked. And I couldn't have been there.
And the staff person that's involved in that is Rob Dunlap, the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
So he's our staff.
Just don't recall that, okay.
Yeah.
That's fair enough. I just-
Yeah.
It was just my impression that maybe that the Planning Commission wasn't understanding the board's intent and their, their message.
Pretty clearly, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
If I, if I could just interject one thing.
Yes.
I think there might be a little misconception of what the liaison is there for. The liaison isn't there to drive the conversation in a way that the board wants it. Liaison is there really to, to report back to the board what they heard from, from the, from the individual commission. We don't want to be the commissioner, individual commissioners driving a specific committee in a direction that that one commissioner may want. So the commissioner's really an observer and might throw a comment here or two about a question that the committee may have of the board. But not to, to drive the discussion.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think you'll find that there are no commissioners that are, there are no chairman of any of our committees that are commissioners.
Actually, not even members.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Because I know in the committees that I belong to, I don't vote. When votes come up, I just sit silent. I never second a motion or anything like that. And I was never, I always thought we really weren't members. We were just liaisons to those bodies. And so it proves that that is the accurate discussion, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would also ask that the Planning Commission's meetings be updated so that they're current. The most current meetings, minutes of the meetings are regarding the February fourth, two thousand fourteen, meeting.
Two thousand fourteen?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's-
Are they posted on the website?
Yeah, I think we can definitely look into that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, we'll figure out what's going on there. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. And then the last item I'd just like to, as I said, the commissioners rectify the late situation that Howard Suppley, a lifelong resident of Orland, has been experiencing. Mr. complain, Mr. Suppley has complained to this board, to the Planning Commission. And, and even on December third, two thousand thirteen, Mr. Suppley complained of this very issue before the Planning Commission. And Mr. Foss, Eric Foss, I'm sorry, said it would be corrected. And as of this date, it still is not corrected. And I would really appreciate, on behalf of Mr. Suppley, that the board, you know, can do whatever you have power to do. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Mr. Vecchione?
Morning, Vecchione, three fifteen, Paper Mill. I just need to make sure I understand where, where we're at with the limited industrial. I've been to all the meetings and I've listened to the changes. I just want to make sure I understand.
The limited industrial, this evening, I believe we are going to pass, it's not a resolution.
It's just an announcement.
It's an announcement that it will be advertised for a public hearing for our July meeting.
I understand that part.
Right.
I just have a few specific questions that I listened to at the last few meetings to make sure I understand where we're at with it before we get to the hearing.
I might not be able to answer them, but I can get answers for you.
Number one, the way I understand this, when the changes are made, if they're made, the properties that are included under this limited industrial, which I think now are fifty-four, anything that's presently going on in those properties, any uses, et cetera, will not have to be changed. Correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so if we get to the limited, whatever's happening there, if it's no longer allowed in, in the limited it was in the regular industrial zoning, it can continue. Correct?
As long as it was being actively conducted, yes, it would be what's called a non-conforming use.
Okay.
Even through change of ownership.
Even through change of ownership. The only thing that might be a limitation on that is scope, you know, how, how many acres are being utilized for it, or how intense it is, or something like that. But if it's the same use, it could go on forever.
Next, from what I understood at the last meeting, the, a change was made to make sure there will be no changes in the front, rear, or side setbacks from what they have now to what will happen if they go into limited. Is that correct?
Not entirely, but we did change that because the limited, the people that would have unlimited industrial property were concerned with the side or particular setbacks. And so we greatly reduced those setbacks. They're not as dramatic as they once were.
That's what I understood-
Yeah.
-the last meeting. Okay. The present industrial uses, naturally, they have materials coming in and out. There is no restriction on truck traffic if it continues the way it is in order to get materials to or from any industrial operation, correct?
Okay, and that's part of the non-conforming use, as long as there's not a dramatic increase in the number of vehicles or whatever, and the use was being operated legally prior to the date of the ordinance being passed, then it could continue, you know, for, as long as it wants to. And that's through change of ownership.
One of the things that I read in the limited industrial was basically, this was being done to make sure business was advanced and to the benefit of all neighbors, et cetera, around businesses, as I read it in the beginning paragraph. In the existing township zoning code, under prohibited uses, I'd like to read you this one sentence. "No use should be permitted which is noxious or offensive by reason of the emission of odors, dust, fumes, smoke, gas, vibration, or noise, or which may be so dangerous by reason of fire or explosion as to constitute a public hazard." Now, I can understand that last part, which makes common sense. But since we're modernizing everything and to avoid any, basically, and to protect the businesses, since when I asked why this was being done, one of the reasons was to protect the businesses. I would basically put forward that you add a word into this, since we're modernizing. And instead of saying "offensive by reason of emissions of odors," I think you should put the word "excessive," emission of excessive odors, dust, fumes, smoke, et cetera, to avoid any nuisance calls that may come in concerning this. Otherwise, anybody could say, "I smell something. I feel something."
I would tell you, that's a great-
"I feel a vibration."
That's a, and I think it's a great comment for the public hearing.
Okay.
I think that's where you would make, because that's the type of information that I think we'd be looking for at the public hearing. And then, and then it becomes a part of that record, and it moves forward. As opposed to us, and I would tell you, yes, we'll talk about it, take it under advisement. But if you do it at the public hearing, it's, it's, you know-
Part of the record.
That's part of the record. Thank you.
But in the current ordinance, what would happen if we were to just add a word or something of that nature? Would that have to go through a-
To go back to the county.
Adding, adding a-
Adding a word like that, yes.
But Jim, if, if the board, let's say, next month, or in August, or whatever, they approve the limited industrial that Tori's talking about tonight, September, October, we could add the word "excessive" in the industrial, the heavy industrial, the industrial zoning district if the board wanted to. But that whole process has to happen for that zoning change. It's a very loud process.
I understand it's one word, but since part of the reason this is being changed and you're creating a limited in the midst of industrial was the protection of everybody, I think that word would be critical if we're modernizing the code, to make sure that, you know, what somebody perceives. I asked at several of these meetings, how many complaints this board of commissioners at the township has concerning industrial properties. I think Bob Taylor said there's been two in the last year or so. So I don't think there's a problem. I want to make sure there wasn't one in the future. That's why that one word, I think, would be critical.
Great.
But I can bring it up at the-
Yes, at the public hearing.
Thank you. That's everything.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? Mr. Suppley?
I think you all know who I am.
Yes, sir.
I think, it seemed to me that quite a few years ago, they passed an ordinance in this township that you're not allowed to park large trucks on the street overnight.
Depends on the size, but yeah, you're right.
Because on Walnut Avenue, between Aaron Fort and Orland, there's a guy's been parking a great big Kenworth rollover truck there. That's one of them ones with the big flat bed on it. And that thing sticks out right in the road. Yeah.
It's Walnut where?
Between Aaron Fort and Orland. He's not there every night, but I've seen him there quite a few nights. And if, God help him, if somebody comes up there and catches the corner of that bed. And I've seen one that did that once, and it ain't a pretty sight. So I think, and it just seemed to me that years ago, there wasn't any of those big trucks on the street.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's worth it to be, to, you know, check out and get that straightened out before somebody gets killed there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Margaret.
And we will follow up on that. At their last month's meeting, we did have a conversation with Mark, our engineer, Mark Geisler, and our inspection, our inspector. And we haven't heard anything back yet, but I think we need to just remind them. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am? Welcome.
Hello, Jeanne Crawford, seven eleven Sandy Hill Road. Couple of questions based upon our discussion on Monday. Number one, in regards to the billboard, when we had a meeting years, a couple of years ago, about the plan that was put into place, it was told that that agreement would be put on the website and viewable on the website, and I can't find it. Does anybody know?
Yeah, did you get the agreement signed?
I know, but we were told that we would be able to view it. So.
If it isn't on the website, you could have a copy of it.
I mean, we can certainly provide a copy, but-
Yes, if I could have a copy.
I don't see any problem putting it on the website, but-
Yeah, because it was told that it would be.
Yeah, okay.
And then Mr. Gillies mentioned about Sandy Hill Road being possibly converted to a one-way. I just want to say, I went personally and surveyed all of the neighbors. And with the exception of one person, and four people being on vacation or out of town or wherever they were, everybody was in agreement. So I don't know what the next steps needs to be, or if you need something signed or whatever. But if you guys would need that, I don't have a problem doing that to help with that initiative.
Yeah, our director of public works was asked to contact PennDOT to find out who and what the process is.
Okay.
Because, as you know, it, it connects to state streets. So we think, we think, we don't know, PennDOT has to be involved in it.
Okay.
And if they don't, then, you know, it's a local decision, but.
Okay.
Weren't we waiting to see if, whether we got that arrow?
We need the left-hand turn on.
We need the arrow first.
At Willow Grove.
Without that, it wouldn't work.
Was that your expectation, that you're assuming we'll get the arrow at Church and Willow Grove?
It seemed like you guys were kind of confident.
I mean, that's in the works, but that's not our call.
Okay, with, with that being said, was there ever an idea about a traffic light brought up for Sandy Hill and around Sandy, Sandy Hill and Station? And was it thought about, considered?
During the construction and, you know, wherever it was for the detour.
It was, yeah, it was the expressway off-site improvements. We talked about that. This is going back when the three and nine was repaired, and they, PennDOT, we'll hear of it. It's, for them, it's very close to the light up at Willow Grove Avenue. It's, I don't know, three or four hundred yards.
Yeah, I mean, it's, okay, well, if you need, I, I've got everybody's okay. So if you guys need anything additional, I wouldn't mind helping out with that-
Thank you.
-to get that done. And I know some of my neighbors are here. I'm not, I know that it's not on the agenda, but I don't know if you guys would be willing to give a brief update on the billboard and what we talked about on Monday for them.
Jim, do you want to do that?
Sure. There have been meetings with the billboard operator after it was determined that the billboard went on before all the preconditions in the agreement had been satisfied. And as a result of the intercession of a couple of the commissioners, the billboard operator agreed to turn off that sign that faces, I'll call it Philadelphia, or faces the northbound traffic between seven-thirty P.M., or it's supposed to be dusk to dawn. And right now, it's around seven-thirty. It's a little bit late in that. But I went by there tonight at seven-thirty-one, and the light was off.
Yeah, it does go off, pretty much. Will that change in the wintertime, if we still have this agreement?
Well, hopefully, we're long before we get to wintertime, we're going to have these issues resolved. And the issues related, as you know from Monday night, about landscaping, overall height, landscaping adjacent to the sign, landscaping on Sandy Hill, mostly screening of the sign. And he's not going to get permission to turn that sign back on after dusk until all those issues are addressed.
In other words, if not, it will still be off.
Okay.
Right.
And one last question. Has there been any talk with PennDOT about the graffiti that's still in front of my house? Because there is still showable graffiti in front of my house.
They were out. Three weeks ago.
We'll notify them again.
I mean, maybe they saw there was painted a little bit, but there's still noticeable graffiti in front of my house. So I would like that addressed, please.
Are you down near the curve?
I'm right on, at the curve, yeah.
The blue paint.
Yeah, the blue big, the biggest one that's there, of course, is right near there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Mr. Suppley?
Between Integrity and Orland.
Yes.
On Walnut.
Okay, thank you. Oh, hi.
Hi. Deana Burnham, fifteen West Mill Road in Flower Town. And I was just wondering if you could tell me what commissioners were involved in the discussions with the billboard company?
Which, which time? I mean, almost all the supervisors were-
Since the problem occurred on Sandy Hill Road.
Since, primarily, it's been Mr. Gillies, Mr. Daley, and Mr. Shaw?
I just have a question for Mr. Garrity, if he's aware that Mr. Gillies took a $10,250 donation in kind when he was running for the state rep.
Your question is, am I aware of that? And the answer is no.
No.
And do you find it appropriate for a commissioner who took that kind of donation in kind to then have discussions with that company regarding issues that are happening with that sign?
I'd have to give it a lot, a lot more thought and look into it, but I will tell you that the- you that the person most offended, most angry, and most determined to shut that person down was Mr. Gillies.
I understand that. I still feel that you need to recuse yourself if you've done business with somebody when you're dealing with this kind of situation where you're representing us as a commissioner.
Could I answer that?
And thank you for, I didn't, thank you for your-
No, no, I would like to answer that, Dana. I would like to know if, when we had a solicitor here named Sean Kilkenny, who did not have any, who was appointed to this board, who caused this problem through some of the issues that weren't taken care of for us during the time, whether, being he was the number one contributor to the Democratic Party of Montgomery County, if Jeff Harbison should not have appointed him there. It's, it's part of our business that, that we have people who, who think like us and have our ideas and would contribute to us. Just because somebody contributes to somebody doesn't mean that you're in their back pocket, any more than Jeff or any of the other Democratic committ, commissioners who were on the board at that time were in Mr. Kilkenny's back pocket. What we do is what people look at. We negotiated a deal with the billboard operator back in the day, and I presume he liked the way we, we worked and was, the way I advocated for our area, and he decided to offer that to me. Now, that I took it, it doesn't mean a thing. I, that billboard, in my opinion, should not be on right at present, but that's, we're in, we're in an issue with it, and I'm doing my job as a commissioner, and the two don't intersect with each other.
Mr. Garrity, I would just ask that you reflect on the situation and, and let us know what you, what you think about that.
So if, if the neighbors contributed to any of the committee, of any of the board up here, the neighbors who are for or against the bus depot, should they be able to speak about the bus depot? I'm going to answer you flat out. No, this is, this isn't a public issue. This was brought up on a public forum-
Okay.
...as well, so I, this is my opportunity to respond. I did not respond on Facebook.
I don't understand why.
I didn't respond on all this stuff. But what I'm telling you is every commissioner here gets donations for certain, from people, and the people tend to donate.
$10,250 donation is excessive.
It doesn't matter what the donation was. I'd like to check with Mr. McCarter how much he got from the teachers' board union. Should he recuse himself from every, any comment from the teachers' union, or any of the other unions that deal with the public? Of course not.
You think it's okay for our, I'm not, you know what?
I do think it's okay.
I wanted to just bring up that situation.
Thank you, you brought up your point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything to add? Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? Mike, I hate to ask you to do something for me, could you just step outside for a minute? Thank you. I'm sorry, my wife's outside, so. She was at graduation, and there must be a problem with the car. I gave her the keys, I was pretty smart about that. All right, so.
She have gas?
She has gas. So, hearing no other public comment, we'll start the committee reports. So in place of Jim Daley this evening, I'll do both the zoning committee and the public works and safety committee. So first, I'll start with zoning. The zoning meeting this month will be Monday evening, June 22 at 7:00 p.m. in this room. There is one zoning request this evening. Are we good?
We need keys.
The keys are on the floor, under the floor mat. Thanks.
No, we're not.
No more here.
This is not live, right?
Steal it, please.
What's the license?
There's one petition this evening. It's from Stephen and Mary Kurtz, 6950 Scotts Fourth Road, Philadelphia, requesting variances to install a 5,800 square foot senior daycare facility at 1200 East Mermaid Lane, Wimmore. The variances are to allow senior daycare use, to reduce the off-street parking requirements, and to allow a 25-foot square, a 25-square-foot ground sign. That's the announcement on zoning. I also have a motion this evening regarding the Erdenheim Elementary School. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of a stipulation and settlement agreement between the township, the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board, and the school district of Springfield Township related to a decision by the zoning hearing board of February 27, 2013, and making said decision applicable to the 2015 cafeteria expansion project at the Erdenheim Elementary School. That's my motion.
Second.
Oh, and I do have that, I'm sorry. I will do that, I apologize. I didn't do that in the beginning, and I circled it. There is a motion, there is a second. Are there any questions on that motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record an unanimous decision, a six-zero decision, thank you. I'll now move on to the Public Works and Public Safety Committee report. On June 3, three bids were received for 2015 highway resurfacing and milling program. I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Glasgow Incorporated of Glenside, Pennsylvania, for their low bid price of $72.23 per ton to resurface specified township streets and $3.06 per square yard to mill specified township streets. The total bid price is $273,613.10. Two other bids were received from Joseph Suker and Sons, and the other from Tony DePaul and Son. The bid tabulations are available in the office of the township manager. Springfield Township participates in a joint purchase of micro-surfacing treatments for roadways through the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities. On April 30, 2015, Whip Paint Township received three bids for micro-surfacing, for their micro-surfacing program. On May 5, 2015, the Board of Supervisors of Whip Paint Township awarded a contract to Asphalt Paving Systems of Hamilton, New Jersey, for their low bid price of $1.99 per square yard for a single application and $2.99 for a double application. I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Asphalt Paving Systems for their low bid price of $25,703 to provide Type A micro-surface single application with crack sealer and Type A micro-surface double application to specified township streets. That's my motion.
There's actually two there, unless you want to combine the two.
Where was the other one?
Glasgow.
Glasgow. Second sentence.
Oh, I missed a sentence. I don't want to combine them. So let's do the micro-surface one. Everybody clear on what we're doing? We're doing the micro-surfacing. There's a motion, there's a second. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record a six-zero vote. So now I will go backwards, and I'll move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Glasgow Incorporated of Glenside. Did I read it that way? I don't think I read the motion, did I?
No.
Oh, okay, so now my motion is to award the contract to Glasgow for their low bid price of $72.23 per ton to resurface the streets and $3.06 per square yard to mill the streets. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on that motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record a six-zero vote. Lastly, I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section 107-32, Schedule 9, parking prohibited by establishing a no-parking zone on the north side of Widener Road from its intersection with Cheltenham Avenue to a 0.125 feet westerly thereof. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any questions on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record a six-zero vote. So now we need to go backwards even further. It's one of those nights, I apologize. So I like to entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes from our previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. Anyone would have moved that forward?
I didn't.
Thank you, Amy. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any question on the motion? As a clarification in the comment, this comes up at the beginning of every business meeting. The only reason it didn't come up this evening because we did not have a quorum, as I explained to the residents that were here. So I did put a circle around it, but I never went back to it, so duly noted that it needs to be moved forward. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record a six-zero vote. Thank you. That concludes both my reports for this evening. I'd now like to call on the Chairman of the Internal Affairs Committee, Commissioner Robert Gillies.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, or President tonight. I do want to let people know we were, some of the commissioners were a little late because we had the privilege of attending the graduation for Springfield Township. This is the first time it ever ran late. First, I'd move that the Board of Commissioners approve the May check reconciliation in the amount of $1,137,366.56, and the June bill listing in the amount of $682,932.16. That is my motion.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record a six-zero vote.
Next, on March 30, 2015, the township opened five proposals received in response to the township issued request for a proposal for the actuary and administrative services for three township pension plans. The Board of Commissioners shortlisted the proposal and received, received and conducted interviews of the top three firms on May 28, 2015. As a, as a result, I move that the Board of Commissioners engage Judah Actuary Consulting of Fort Washington, PA, to provide actuary and administrative services for three, for the three township pension plans, consistent with their proposal dated March 30, 2015. The annual fee for the services to be rendered is $9,000. That is my motion.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please record it, or, all opposed, please record a six-zero vote. Thank you.
My last motion tonight, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 1354, a resolution honoring the contributions made by Robert Carpenter to the valued nonprofit organizations of Springfield Township and to the township community. That is my motion.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record a six-zero vote. Thank you.
Mr. Daley was also in favor of that.
Yeah.
You can still say unanimous.
Yes. That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillies. I'd now like to call on the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Baird Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So I have one announcement and a motion. First, I would like to announce that the Board of Commissioners authorize the conduct of a public hearing with a possible vote with regard to an ordinance amending the existing industrial zoning district, creating a limited industrial zoning district, and rezoning specific industrially-zoned properties from the industrial and/or c-residential to the limited industrial zoning district. Public hearing has been scheduled for July 8, 2015, at 8:00 p.m. in the Springfield Township Building. So that's my announcement, and next, on June 9, 2015, the township conducted a mandatory pre-bid meeting in association with a community development block grant appropriation that would be utilized to resurface Clement Road in Orland. Unfortunately, only one contractor attended the meeting, therefore Montgomery County will require that the entire project be rebid. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize rebidding of the Clement Road resurfacing project in conjunction with the community development block grant program sponsored by Montgomery County. That is my motion.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record a six-zero vote.
Okay, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. I'd now like to call on the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Harbison.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President.
It's like every name.
During the month of May 2015, Springfield Township residents recycled 184.1 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 80.2 percent. Net cost for the month was $11,156.79. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Harbison. And I'd like to call on the Chairman of the Library Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm speaking a motion for the Environmental Advisory Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Patrick Edis, Zeta Cross, and Mara Baird to new three-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. The new three-year terms of service shall expire on June 14, 2014. That is my motion.
2018.
It's 2018?
2018.
2018, I'm sorry, yes.
Very good, thank you. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record a six-zero vote.
That concludes my report, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. I'd now like to call on the Chairwoman of the Human Resources Committee, Commissioner Sandman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes the committee reports for this evening. The public comment period is now open for the second time. Anyone wish to make public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Board Members, Christine Hesser, Orlemans Avenue in Orland. Question, was there a stop sign on the agenda for Orlemans Avenue and Orland Mill Road? Did I see that somewhere?
No, on Monday night, there was a report on a stop sign request on Orland Mill Road at either Plymouth or Ascot.
Oh, okay.
There was a police review and-
Okay, at the wrong intersection, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Have a good evening, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.